Good evening, welcome to the Monday, June 19th meeting, 2017 of the Albion City Council. Before we begin, I'd ask you if you have any phones or electronic devices to put them on silent. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask Clerk Domingo to call the roll.
Councilmember Barnes, Reed, Brown-
Here.
Lawler-
Here.
Spicer-
Here.
French-
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Are there any councilmember comments this evening? Councilmember Reed.
On Saturday, we had a Juneteenth celebration in Holland Park. It was a beautiful day and everyone has gotten, we've gotten a lot of positive comments about it. We introduced our new workout equipment while we were celebrating Juneteenth, which really went over good. Kids liked it, a lot of people I've been working out on and I've been hearing about how nice it is and there's not many cities around here that have it, so we are just a little bit unique. And I want to give some shout outs and some thank yous to Chief Kemp, who he and Assistant Chief Kearns did a fantastic job. They helped me and almost the whole police department was out there doing things with kids. They had the fire trucks out, the firehouse and the everything and that was really good for our young ones. We got, and our fantastic Public Safety Department, the guys were there with Lucy Jones. I didn't get to pet her because I was too busy working, so. Thank Council Commissioner Gary Thompson, who always comes out and supports us. And the Gospel Fest was a success. We had a lot of people who came at that. Mr. Mike Trotter, he played the keyboard and Kelly Dickinson was on the guitar and First Lady Mackenzie and her daughter did Gospel Rap. I haven't heard much of that. That was really, really nice. And Chosen Generation from the Macedonia Baptist Church blessed us with several songs. So did Mrs. Spicer, Mrs. Greg, Mrs. Bogan. And we want to thank Mrs. Lelou, Miss Maggie and Miss Linda for all they did to help us with Juneteenth. And if you don't know, Holland Park has a website, so if you want to see some of the things, you can go on Holland Park's website and you can see it here. Also, the committee who worked on that this year was Councilwoman Brown, Mrs. Bogan, myself and Mrs. Altrina Gaffney.
Are there any other comments from council this evening? Councilmember Brown.
I'd like to take a moment to echo everything that Councilmember Lynn Reed just said and I also want to emphasize how much we love and appreciate her for her hard work and dedication, not only to Juneteenth but to the Holland Park renovation and the city of Albion, so.
Seeing no other comments, I'll just repeat what was said. Councilmember Reed, we really appreciate the hard work you put into it. I mean, it was actually a fabulous event. I mean, I was really impressed and the park is looking amazing. And so just keep up the good work, anything we can do to help. But I was just, you know, when I was sitting out there at various parts of the, you know, the morning and afternoon, it looked very nice and the equipment's really fun, too, so. Seeing no other comments, we will move on to the public hearing to set the 2017 tax levy. Item A, Request Approval Resolution 2017-2015, excuse me, 2017 dash 25 to set 2017 tax levy. I'm going to open up the public hearing for that. If there are any, seeing any public comment on that, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and then I'd ask for a motion to approve the tax levy.
So moved.
Support? Moved and seconded. Do you want to provide?
I'm actually going to defer to Finance Director Tom Mead for this one. Thank you.
Tom Mead, Finance Director.
Good evening.
Actually, what you're seeing before you with the milage rates, there are no changes with one exception and this is good news, it's actually a decrease. On the debt service fund, the money we collect for that particular mileage goes into a specific fund for debt service. Every year you try to gauge that to where, you know, you're trying to set it long before the mileage taxable value is known. So you're trying to kind of estimate maybe a little on the high side because you don't want to come up short and not have enough money to make the payment. So over time for this bond, the accumulation of this little extra each year has built up enough in the fund where we're actually able to lower that on this final year, which by the way, 2017 is the final year on this bond. So we were able to lower that from 1.58 last year down to just one mil this year. So there will actually be a slight reduction, a little over half a mil this year in your tax, summer tax bills versus prior year. Any questions?
No questions. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So just so I'm clear, there are no changes except for that slight decrease in the debt service, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any others?
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, as we proceed to roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed-
Yes.
Brown-
Yes.
Lawler-
Yes.
Spicer-
Yes.
French-
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Moving on to presentations, item A, 2016 Annual Audit, Abraham and Gaffney.
Good evening, I'm Bill Tucker from Abraham and Gaffney. I'm here tonight to present to you the audit financial statements from December 31st, 2016. So I know I handed out a lot of materials to you tonight, so I'd like to kind of walk through those so everybody's familiar with those documents I handed out to you. First document I'm going to hold up is the largest of the bound documents there for you. This is the bound financial statements for December 31st, 2016. Within the bound financial statements, you'll find all the necessary reports, note disclosures to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, so all the necessary financial statements. Also, within that document, you'll find within the independent auditors' report, our opinion on those financial statements as well, so. And that's something we'll talk about during the presentation with you tonight. There was also two smaller, two stapled documents for you as well. The first one that I'll talk about did have a title at the front of it. This is what they call the Performance Audit of Funds Expended Under Section 13 of Public Act 51 of 1951. So Michigan Department of Transportation this year is requiring all auditors of cities, villages, villages and road commissions to do a performance audit of the Act 51 funds that were expended by those communities. So this is this performance audit where we're looking at specific requirements set forth by the Michigan Department of Transportation related to those funds and then trying to go through and see if there's any discrepancies related to the compiled laws that are out there related to those funds. As you kind of go through and read that, just to let you know, there were none, no discrepancies that we noted within that report. The only thing that we did note was related to just the timing of the filing of that report, so relatively minor compared to the whole Act 51's that you're expending. So just the timing of the filing of the report. And then the last document that we have for you, this is on Abraham and Gaffney letterhead. It doesn't have a title at the top of it. We would consider this to be our Board Communication Letter. So within this loose document, we have, like I said, the Board Communication Letter. Majority of that is boilerplate language. And to go through and address some of the more significant estimates within the financial statements for such things as useful life of capital assets is a significant estimate. So that is noted within there. Also, at the, kind of the middle of the second page, you also see a significant section there related to corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So that is, you know, a significant, you know, dollar amount that's noted there of an uncorrected misstatement. So we have one potential misstatement for a total overstated net position of $63,551. That dollar amount or that uncorrected misstatement relates to a difference in the actual evaluation report that you get for your pension plan and the amount of investments on the investment statement for the pension plan. So one, let's just say, let's just use easy numbers. One statement shows, the actual evaluation shows that you have a million dollars and the investment statements say that you have a million, $63,551. So there's that $63,000 difference. It's more of a, I believe it's more of a timing issue between those two where the actuary is getting the data one day and there's still activity going on the next day. They're not getting that information as of December 31st, so there's that slight difference. That's considered to be a potential misstatement and uncorrected and it's not something that we, you know, are writing you up for or making, you know, saying that the financial statements aren't in accordance with GAAP. It's considered to be an immaterial dollar amount to the financial statements as a whole. So the financial statements are still in accordance with GAAP even though there's that $63,000 difference there. So it is something we need to point out to you. We've had that for the last three years, there's been slight discrepancies in those amounts. So that is something that we're kind of keeping track of over the years. The last document that I have for you is the bound audit presentation for you. So I pulled pages out of the financial statements that I wanted to talk about with council tonight and then I also added some graphs and charts in here for you as well. So this is kind of the audit presentation outline. So for anybody who followed along with this, this would make it the easiest for everybody to follow along. The first page that you turn to in the audit presentation outline is the Independent Auditors Report. This is page Roman numeral number one of the financial statements. The purpose of an audit is to provide an opinion as to the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It's not to detect fraud and it's not to give you an opinion on your internal controls. Within the Independent Auditors Report, we're providing our opinion on your financial statements. We're actually giving our opinion on the nine opinion units of the city. Those nine opinion units are described in the first paragraph and they are the governmental activities, the business type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units. Each major fund, in which there's five major funds in the first paragraph, that highlighted section in the first paragraph? Yep. Governmental activities, we have all of the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities. See that?
I don't.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Very first page, first line. Yep. Yeah, highlights line.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So it says-
I'll find it.
We have, you know, the very first line there, it says, "We have all of the company financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities."
I'm with you, thank you.
The aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund, in which there's five major funds of the city. Those five major funds are the general fund, Albion Trust, the solid waste, the sewer and the water funds. And then the last opinion unit is the aggregate remaining fund information. Our opinion on each of those nine opinion units is at the top of the second page in the paragraph that's labeled Opinions, in which it states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." That's what we consider to be an unmodified or clean opinion and that's the best opinion you can receive on your financial statements. From there, we're going to turn past that next page and we will turn to page number one of the financial statements, which the heading at the top is the Statement of Net Position. The Statement of Net Position is a snapshot of your assets, deferred outflows of resources, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources and net position at December 31st, 2016. I've highlighted a couple of numbers on this page for you related to your pension plans because as you remember, last year, as I went through my discussion or presentation last year, there's two new numbers that we reported on the Statement of Net Position last year and those related to the city's pensions. So this year we have a net pension asset, which is the first number that's highlighted there, of $8,203,663. And we also have a net pension liability number, which is, you know, the second number that's highlighted down there for you. So in total, for the governmental activities, it's $765,000 and then for the component units, it's $411,313. So in total, that's about just a little bit over a $1.1 million liability there for your pensions. There are a little bit more details related to those pensions that I have for you on the very next two pages that I wanted to point out to you just to give you a little bit more perspective of those two numbers. So the first one is that net pension liability number that I wanted to talk about. So the net pension liability is about $1.1 million and that is related to your MERS pension plan. Your MERS pension plan is for your primary government and the Housing Commission is also combined into that MERS pension plan. That MERS pension plan has changed from last year to this year. So you, last year if we looked at the financial statements, that was a net pension asset and was funded at about 106% funded. This year it's a net pension liability and it's funded at about 91% funded overall. So you have, you know, pensions out there that you've, you know, are providing of 13.7 million, investments sitting with MERS of about 12.5 million and leaving you with that liability of about $1.1 million. The reason for that change from a live, or an asset to a liability related to some assumption changes related, from MERS. So as MERS goes through and looks at your actuarial evaluations, they have a lot of assumptions that they use. One of the assumptions that they have used over the years has been an 8% return on your investments. They've moved that down to 7.75% this year, so 0.25% change in the rate of return on investments. The other significant component that changed was related to the mortality tables. So the mortality tables that they were using in previous actuarial assumptions or valuations was a 1994 mortality table, which at that point in time, people were living about 70 years. Now they're using the 2014 mortality tables and people are living about eight to nine years longer, about 79 years, I think is probably about the average there.
So the city is not, you know, this is an issue that, you know, I've been aware of, you know, with other cities and it's kind of, I don't want to say crisis, but that's something that, that's changing for a lot of municipalities where they have planned-
Yeah, so anybody that's been with MERS, you know, this is a change across the board for everybody that's worth MERS. I mean, that's just an assumption change that they're taking into account now for this. People are living longer and they need to factor that into their actuarial assumptions. And, you know, looking at the city of Albion compared to other municipalities, just with your MERS plan, if we look across the entire state of our other clients, people are, the communities are being funded at about 60 to 7, 65 to 70% is the average that we're seeing. And you guys are at 91% still. So still well above the average even with these changes, significant changes in your assumptions. So well above the average for your MERS plan. So overall, still very well funded and, you know, you look at your contributions. You just started contributing again. It probably had been a period of about 14 years or so that you, 14, 15 years that there wasn't any required contributions and you're contributing at about, you know, $30,000, $35,000 right now. So very, you know, still a pretty low amount compared to a lot of other communities just because of where you're funded at. The very next page I wanted to talk about was the, this is the net pension asset that's on the Statement of Net Position and this relates to the Public Safety Officers Retirement System. So this is a single employer defined benefit pension plan. So this is just for the city of Albion and the public safety officers. This pension plan is, has an $8.2 million asset for the city and it's funded at 162% funded. So again, a very well funded plan and it's been funded for, you know, the last 15, 20 years where you guys haven't had to put into those, those contributions, insignificant contributions in, for the city. So very well funded plan. And that's very unusual, so, I mean, you guys are at 91% for your MERS, well above the average across the state and then being 162% funded. You just don't see that across the state. Any questions on pensions before I move forward? All right, the very next page that we'll turn to is page number three of the financial statements. Page number three is your governmental funds balance sheet. This is the fund level presentation of your financial statements. So this is a snapshot of your assets, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources and fund balance at December 31st, 2016. So page number three, I think, one page past that if you want.
Page number three?
Yep, go one more page further. Yep. Yep, there you go, perfect. So on page number three, we focus on the general fund, which is the far left column and that is the main operating fund of the city. In particular, on the, on the balance sheets, we look, like to look at your total fund balance, which is the second number up from the bottom and then also your, your unassigned and assigned fund balance as well. So I'll combine those two totals together as I'm talking about them through the presentation. So total general fund fund balance of $1,497,902 with portions that are considered to be non-spendable for such things as prepaid expenses. So you've already expended those funds, can't spend them again, so that's $214,000. Leaving you with an unassigned and assigned, and assigned fund balance of $1,282,945. So I combined that third and fourth number up from the bottom to come up with that $1,282,945. That dollar amount is available for expenditures in future periods and represents approximately 37% of your annual operating expenses. That is a little bit above last year. Last year was about 26.5% of your annual operating expenses and our recommendation would be a minimum of 15 to 20%. So you guys have, you know, stayed just above that minimum. You've been at 26, you know, 26 to 30 and got up to a little bit higher this year at 37%. So a good fund balance for the city.
I recall stating being made regarding, at a certain point, if you had, the fund balances too high.
Yeah, it'd be pretty different. I mean, I find some communities that have a pretty significant fund balance and they might have, you know, 100% fund balance. It really depends on what your plans are for the future. You know, if you have a big project coming up, if you have, you know, big renovations or whatever that might be, there's definitely obviously uses for those funds.
But the state's not going to, does the state kind of have a requirement to say we have to?
Oh, no, the state doesn't have requirements set forth in that area of too much.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember Lawler.
Can you kind of help me? Help me with assigned and unassigned fund balances. What does that mean?
So the, the unassigned would just be the residual amount. So everything that's kind of left over goes into unassigned fund balance. Assigned fund balance can be a lot of different things. One of the things that it could be is if you, if you looked at your 2017 budget, if you guys budgeted to use, you know, you had more expenditures than you did revenues. So that could be, you guys have therefore just assigned that portion of your fund balance because we know we're going to use $41,000 of fund balance next year. So that could be an instance where you're assigning fund balance. Specifics of that.
So if we, if we decided to, let's say, increase the pension payments from 35 up to, I don't know, 50 and we said we're going to use part of the general fund to do that, that, that portion that we're using to add-
Yeah.
-to pay that basically becomes assigned.
Yep, it kind of depend on the motion that you did as a council. So if you guys, if that was, you know, kind of part of a council, that's something that council decided to do, if that was maybe through the budget process. If it was through the budget process and you just said, "Well, we're going to go from $35,000 to $50,000", that might not be assigning the fund balance. But if you are, the specifics on this one is that you've assigned fund balance for communications. I can't remember the specifics of what that is, but those $41,000 that you guys said, "Well, we're going to use this for communications", it's whatever it is, I can't remember exactly the specifics. But that's something that as a council you guys decided and kind of assigned that portion of fund balance.
Well, and that might be the Albion connector.
I can't remember the-
Okay.
Yeah, I can't remember the specifics of what that detail is. I have it in my work papers, but. So there are different levels there, so you have, you know, you have your non-spendable fund balance, you have restricted fund balance, so you could have funds coming from an outside source, say the state of Michigan, and they've put a specific restriction on those funds. So just say like, you know, money coming into major local streets would be restricted for major local streets. There also is a section, and you guys don't have any of that currently, but a committed fund balance as well. So as a council, you could have a resolution that we're going to commit these funds for a specific purpose and the only way to undo that, so if, you know, you know you're going to spend something on a big project five years from now and you want to commit these funds for that purpose, the only way to undo that would be a resolution to remove that, those committed, committed funds for that purpose. So there's several different levels there. Okay. All right, moving on to the very next page, next page that you'll turn to is page number five of the financial statements. Page number five is your Statement of Revenues, Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balances for the year ended December 31st, 2016. Again, focusing on the far left-hand column, the general fund of the city. I'll start at the top of the page with your total revenues. You had total revenues in 2016 of $3,812,993. That was an increase of approximately 158,000 or 4.3% from 2015 to 2016. The main area that we saw increase within your revenues was within your tax revenues. So your tax revenues were up about $105,000 compared to the previous year. Two different areas there for your increase. First, your income tax revenues were up about $47,000 compared to the previous year. The second area was related to property taxes. So your property tax revenues were up about $58,000 and that, the main result of that is that you received a check from the local community stabilization authority for reimbursement of personal property taxes. So, so the personal property taxes, you know, kind of went away or some of the property, personal property taxes went away starting in 2013 and then the local community stabilization authority has been returning those funds back to the cities or the municipalities through that entity. So that comes in as tax revenue for the city. Moving down the page to your expenditures, you had total expenditures in 2016 That was a decrease of approximately 73,000 or 2.1% compared to 2015. The main area that we saw fluctuation there was within your public safety. Your public safety expenditures were down about $64,000 and the decreases there related to costs related to the county dispatch. Your county dispatch costs were down about $50,000 compared to the previous year. Last item, results for the year. Last item, results for the year, third number up from the bottom, you added to your fund balance in your general fund of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. All right, from there, I have a couple graphs and charts for you to give you a visual perspective of some of those same numbers. The first one, chart that we have for you is a five-year analysis of your general fund revenues, expenditures and fund balance. So the blue there is your revenues and other financing sources. The purple is your expenditures and other financing uses. And then the trend line, the fund balance is your trend line across the bottom. As you can see from this graph, four out of the last five years, your revenues have exceeded your expenditures. And we do see that good positive trend there in your fund balance. So a good, you know, trend there with your fund balance increasing over those five years. From there, we have a couple pie charts. This is the composition of your general fund revenues and expenditures. The bottom one, or the top one is your general fund revenues. Making up the largest piece of the pie for your general fund revenues is your intergovernmental revenues at twenty-nine percent of your total revenues. So that'd be such things as like state revenue sharing is the main thing coming in for your intergovernmental revenues. And we also do have some federal grants that come in as well to make up a portion of that. Second largest piece of the pie, the twenty-eight percent is your property taxes. And then third largest piece of the pie, the green component, is your income taxes at twenty-five percent. Bottom portion of the page, your general fund expenditure detail. Making up the large portion of your expenditures is public safety at fifty-six percent of your total expenditures. And then the second largest piece is your general government at twenty-four percent. From there, a couple other graphs and charts, I won't really go into too much detail. I'll point, point out one thing on each of those graphs for you. You can kind of see that spike there in two thousand fourteen. That just related to an increase in a federal grant that you received. I think that was for a fire truck. Yeah, yeah, fire truck back in two thousand fourteen.
A million, a million dollars.
Yes, so you see that big spike and then it goes back down very consistent across the years for all those different expenditures. And then the next charts, the very, the next page for you is on expenditures. Again, you see that big uptick there in public safety in two thousand fourteen. Or that's just the cap outlay expense for that fire truck there in two thousand fourteen for you. And other than that, very consistent across the board for all of your expenditures from year to year to year. And the very last page is, again, this is our, a letter on Abraham and Gaffney Letterhead. This is our report on internal control. Oh, did I not put that in there? I'm sorry.
At the front.
Oh, it's in the front? I'm sorry, well, I do have a report on internal control or financial reporting I'll just quickly talk about with you. Oh, it's before the graphs, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, misplaced it. Really, the only thing I wanted to point out to you on your report on internal control or financial reporting is that we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control or financial reporting. So a good, clean report for the city in two thousand sixteen adds to your fund balance and you, good, unmodified, clean opinions on your reports.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll move on to item B under presentations, presentation on the Big Read by Jess Roberts.
Hi, thank you everyone, my name is Jess Roberts and I have three goals tonight. I would love to tell you about a book and some amazing young people to give you some dates to remember that are coming up in the fall. And to invite you and you and you, people who are watching, to collaborate with us. So this year, Albion's Big Read is coming back yet again and we'll be reading a book called True Grit, which was written by Charles Portis. True Grit is a novel about a fourteen-year-old girl named Maddie Ross who sets out to avenge her father's death and to pursue his killer into Indian territory. With the sometimes dubious help of Rooster Cogburn and Mr. LaBeef. It's an adventure story about law enforcement and the post-war life of veterans, about coming of age and doing right by people you love. It's about what it means to be from a place. And most of all, it's about the messy work of being messy people in a messy world. We will have copies of this book available to you. But happily, this book is already in the hands of six college students and twenty-two Albion students. Who will be arriving at Albion College's campus tomorrow at ten-thirty in the morning for the first of six meetings in June and July, and then for a week-long camp in August. And those students will not only experience what it's like to be on a campus, but will also experience what it's like to create a community through shared experience of reading and the arts. And I just want to say, these are middle and high school students who have agreed to get up what I'm told is quite early. It's quite early to be somewhere at ten-thirty in the morning. And I just want to recognize these students who I think are really fantastic. And I should say also, I'm gonna read all of the students' names, but I think it's really important to know that these are kids who were nominated to be a part of this program by four teachers in the Marshall Public, five teachers in the Marshall Public Schools in collaboration with the Big Read Planning Committee. So we have some planning committee members here, Kena Williams is here, Melz Christensen is here, Morgan Hall is here, and there are several others. And as a committee, we worked with Hope Anderson, Claire Banfield, Vicky Banfield, Joni Parks and Laura Brownell to nominate these students. So the fact of these students' nomination is evidence of those teachers seeing the things that we all see in these students, which is incredibly big hearts, enormous potential. And these students are Ataya Artis, Talia Austin, Carl Bates, Navion Burnett, Emmylou Roberts Christensen, Talia Davis, Jemaya Thunderberg, Ivan Green, Thailand Martin, Aja Metz, Marshall Nicholson, Aliyah Roberts, Melina Solis, Fred Stewart, Jacoby Stewart, Tajiana Stewart, Bolivia Stovall, J.T. On Wallace, Avion Washington, Nishanti Wetherall, Jason Whitstone and Nia Williams. So if you see these amazing young people, please thank them and tell them how fantastic it is that they're doing this incredible work for our city. I also wanted to give you some dates to remember. So the kickoff event is gonna be in the amazing Holland Park, thank you Len Reed, on the thirtieth of September from one to four P.M. And it will begin yet again with a, with a parade starting at City Hall and marching toward Holland Park. On the third of October, we have a concert planned with the Warren Treaty. On the eleventh of October, Brian Cuyada, who is a playwright, is gonna perform his one-man show, Where Did We Sit on the Bus at the Bohm Theater. And this is a production that's been reviewed both by the Chicago Tribune and the New York Times. Really excited that it's coming here and it's coming in collaboration with the Frank Center. On the twenty-first is Walk the Beat, the amazing outdoor series of concerts. And then on the twenty-sixth of October is Jason Reynolds Talk. Jason Reynolds is an amazing young adult writer who has won the NAACP Image Award, Coretta Scott King Award, who's had, I think, multiple books who were National Award, National Book Award finalists. And he will be speaking at seven P.M. on the night that we recognize the work of the amazing young people, which is the twenty-sixth of October. And I just wanted to give an additional plug for an Albion District Library event that is happening on the twenty-eighth of August. Where the Y.A. Ever After Book Club is reading Jason Reynolds' book, When I Was the Greatest, and discussing it at six P.M. at Big B's. So Reynolds will be out there, his words will be out there in August. And we will have copies of both True Grit and Jason Reynolds' books available to the community, starting just after the forks. The Big Read is a work of collaboration. I see collaborators all over the place, the member, the Vista members collaborated with us, Castor Concepts, Alpha Kappa Alpha, the Marshall Public Schools, the City Council. Many, many people and organizations in Albion have collaborated in the past on the Big Read. And I would just like to open our arms again, if you as individuals or your organizations would be interested in partnering with us, we would love to partner with you. Which might mean having a table at our kickoff event, it might mean hosting an event or a discussion. It might mean making sure that we can coordinate our events so that there isn't overlap. And if you happen to have lots of money, we would love to invite you to be a sponsor of the Big Read. So please feel free to get involved in a number of different ways. And if you see those young people, thank them, they are the most amazing people who I get to work with in Albion, I'm so thankful for them. And for all the people, their parents in particular, who make it possible for them to be there. So thank you and please come and see us in October.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
The third of October, in the Bohm Theater.
And then the.
Those books are gonna cost zero dollars.
And where are the pickup locations over time?
I'm sorry?
To, to get the books?
To get the books, we're gonna have book hubs again. And so last year, we had a book hub here in City Hall, we'll have a book hub at the Albion District Library and also at the Charles Snyder Center.
Any other council questions?
And those books will be available beginning?
They will start just after the forks. And if your organization hosts a book discussion, even before then, we'll deliver copies for all of the people who are part of the organization. So for instance, the American Association, the Association of American University Women in Vista hosted a discussion last year. And so we delivered twenty-five books so that all the members could have them before the discussion. So if your organizations are interested in hosting a discussion, I would love to talk to you about that. The students come in, they lead discussions that are totally different and unexpected. All the discussions were very different last, last year, excuse me. And we're really excited about the possibility of organizations partnering together. So the AAUW and Vista discussion last year, I thought was really dynamic and big and like full of lots of people from all over and that was really awesome.
Councilwoman Spicer.
So is this the same as the book is probably, movie is probably based off of that book?
It is, it is.
Oh.
Yep, and so hopefully, we will also have a showing of the John Wayne nineteen sixty-nine version and the Kevin, no, the, I'm trying to think of Matt Damon and Jeff Bridges version. That came out in two thousand four or nine, I think, so hopefully, those will also be at the Bohm for zero dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will continue to, item C under presentations, Build Albion Fellows update.
So we're here to represent the Build Albion Fellows and give an update on what we're doing this summer for each of the classes. I'm Robert Hayes, I am a third-year fellow.
I'm Nicole Young and I'm an incoming freshman.
And we were going to have Marcus Weatherspoon also present for his class, but he could not make it today, so.
So the class of two thousand twenty-one just got done with the, our June retreat last week. So Monday and Tuesday, we stayed on campus at Mitchell Twin Towers. And during the course of the week, we had many classes and bonding activities with other members because we do come from different schools. And during our classes, we learned a lot about the social change model and the seven Cs. And we learned a lot on leadership and things like that. And then we ended our retreat Friday by cleaning up Holland Park, putting mulch everywhere. That's about it that we did last week. And then we just started today working with the rec department with summer dreams and pea pods, and that's what we're doing for the summer. So we're split into two groups and some of us work with the older kids and the other half of us work with the younger kids. And it's, we go until August and we partnered with the Frank Center for the first two weeks. So we work nine to three-thirty-ish every day and the rest of the summer until two.
And then the class of two thousand twenty is also working with Recreation Department for summer dreams and pea pods as well, which she just described you. But they're also working as mentors towards the incoming freshman class. So they're usually paired, one of the older ones to one or two of the younger ones, so they can mentor and learn that way. And then they're gonna continue their practice with the different leadership models that they've been learning throughout the years. And then my class this year, we are not working with the Recreation Department, we're gonna work with Harry Wilson. And we wanted to find and, find a way to increase participation of youth and youth events in Albion. So we're starting that out by having a survey available for the youth in the city at three different locations, the library. We are working at Family Fair and we have one in the Luddington Center. And we want to know what the children want during the summer as activities and just groups that they can do and go to. And we're also working on creating a calendar of events that are already in place that people may not know about so that they can attend those. And then we are also preparing, learning what to do to start our capstone project, which we will be doing our senior years, so in one year. And then at the end of those, we present them and everybody will be doing one in our, in each of the classes during their senior years. And then finally, we're also doing leadership positions on the teams for the basketball tournament, which I'll be talking about in a second.
So something new we're working on is the Neighborhood Revitalization Project and it's to help revitalize the city of Albion. We have both, well, we plan to have both community and college volunteers. And we're going to take a two-block area west of Superior Street downtown. And we're going to community houses and asking what they want done, like outside work, flowers, things like that. And we're going to ask them to help us complete the task, like they're gonna commit their time to also help us do it with them. And that is going to start in early September.
So now onto the big project of this summer, which is the third annual basketball tournament. So right now, we have it set for July fifteenth at ten-thirty A.M. It will most likely be all day and it's at Holland Park, westward. And then we have three age groups, ten thirteen, fourteen to seventeen and eighteen up. And then right now, the hosts of the basketball tournament are the same as previous years, as the Build Albion Fellows and the Albion Recreation Department. This year, one thing that's different is we have an online sign-up set, so people can go online and you can just get it all done there. And then we also have in-person registration down here at City Hall. And then our current sponsors are the Albion Recreation Department and we applied for two, not scholarships, but grants, the Youth Fund and the James C., James C. Kingsley Youth Fund, which we both got. And those help pay for teams so that they don't have to pay the forty-five dollars for the teams to play. And then this year, our goals, we have increased participation from the past years. We have increased efficiency of the tournament. This year, we're doing a three-on-three tournament with two players on the sidelines to sub in instead of a five-on-five like previous years. We want increased community engagement, so even if you don't know people that are playing, we encourage people to come out to just watch it. And then we want to have an overall fun time as well as in the past. And then we have a few requests, let everyone spread the word of when it is, that it'll be fun. We need more people to play, some teams, we want everyone to come out. And then if anybody has ideas, we're willing to take the ideas. And then, if anybody has ideas, we're willing to take the ideas and then talk them over at our meetings each week. And so, we can increase, have it be better than years past.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. What is the capstone project?
So, a capstone project is at Albion College, we are going to, each of the Build Albion Fellows is going to pick a project that they want to implement in the Albion community. They're going to pull this off, hopefully, by working with whoever they can find. It's, they want it to be, like, we do the work and we pull it off. And then, we present it at the Elkin Isaac Research Symposium. And so, we'll have a presentation on what we did and something like that.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. One more question. You said to spread the word. Are there any flyers?
There are flyers that are available at the Luddington Center or any Build Albion Fellow. Or Kena and Clarence also will have copies or they'll be able to get copies for you.
Is there anything that council may can put on like their council page or something like that?
Yeah. So, we have a social, I believe we have a social media page. Yeah, it's on Facebook. I know people are sharing it.
Okay.
Many of them are.
Is it on the Build Albion Fellows website or where can I find it?
I know we have a Facebook event and there's a copy of the flyer on there. And people have just been like screenshotting it and sharing it on Twitter. So, like, younger people hear about it, like their friends and things like that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed?
I'd say again to the group that came out to, they did a fantastic job. They mulched trees, they pulled leaves, they just really did a lot of work out there, breaking around the senior section and all and got the work out of the machines a little bit.
Great. Are there any other questions? Thank you all so much. Item D under Presentations, AmeriCorps Vista Update.
All right, we'll get started. Hello, my name is Morgan and this is the AmeriCorps Vista Initiative that has been in town for about a year now. So, about a year ago, almost exactly, we came to you and said we are going to be doing a survey, a community needs assessment or survey for our first year of service here in Albion. And so, we have completed that. We have completed the analyzation of it. And now, we are here to just kind of give you some summary findings that we have found throughout that survey as well as a little bit of insights and recommendations that we as a team see fit for this information. So, a little bit of background about the Build Albion AmeriCorps Vista Initiative. This is a national service program that is funded through the federal government. And it is a collaboration between the city of Albion, Albion College, as well as community organizations that have decided to partner with this, which began in two thousand sixteen. So, it's been about a year and a half now. Yeah. And this survey focuses on capacity building for organizations that are in Albion and serving Albion residents or surrounding residents to alleviate poverty or just kind of challenging issues for the community members. The purpose of our survey was to gather information about economic development and where city residents would like the city to focus on as well as education, healthcare access, and food access. Additionally, it was a way to identify transportation needs for Albion residents, whether it was within Albion specifically, out of Albion, or just whatever reasons additionally there were. And then, also a way to identify how residents figure out what is going on in the city. So, what is the best mode of communication for that? So, we'll be sharing that with you.
All right. So, a little bit about the process. During the roughly three-month period from January to April, the vistas collected four hundred and seventy surveys. And as you see, two hundred and twenty-five of which were on paper and two hundred and forty-five of which were online. Though, there were forty of them that we could not analyze due to the fact that the people who filled them out were not Albion city residents. And we advertised just to make sure we got the word out there to, you know, community meetings and coalitions, newsletters, just basically anything we could do to make sure we got everyone's attention. We surveyed at nearly twenty-five different locations, including the Albion District Library, Kids and Stuff, Books and More. Just basically anywhere downtown and more. And collectively, we spent over four hundred hours surveying, putting up flyers, and just basically spreading the word. There were some challenges that we faced while we were doing the survey, of course. The survey length was definitely a deterrent because when we told people how long it was, they weren't exactly thrilled. Instructions were not always followed, unfortunately, but that's okay. It happens. And there are also some small differences between our paper version and the online version. And then, lastly, I know for me, like, when we're out surveying towards the end, when I'd ask people if they're interested to take the survey, they'd already taken it. So, it was kind of hard to reach those people who hadn't done it yet.
All right. And so, tonight, we want to give you a little bit of an overview of some of the findings that were in the report. And this isn't everything. This is just a little bit of snapshot of everything that's in the report. And so, that survey report will be out a little bit later once that's finalized. So, one thing that we asked regarding community planning was what Albion residents feel are the most important aspects that Albion should have to be a thriving community. And so, it may or may not be a surprise that the top responses were good infrastructure, safe neighborhoods, having an active and lively downtown. Those were the top three. And then, the next three were a variety of affordable recreation options, variety of retail stores, and a wide variety of quality housing options. And then, we also asked residents regarding community planning which physical environmental factors concern them regarding their health and safety. And so, again, this is probably not a surprise, but broken-down homes and buildings as well as abandoned industrial sites and toxic substances are the top concerns among the respondents of the survey. And in addition to housing issues such as water, mold, lead, paint, and safe and accessible exercise locations. And so, we also asked residents where they might be needing some assistance to meet the financial needs of their households. And even though it says that "I am not struggling" was the top response, this is one where people were allowed to select more than one option to select as many that applied to them. So, the "I am not struggling" piece actually only makes up about twenty-five percent of the total respondents. So, meaning that there are seventy-five percent of the respondents that are struggling in some way to meet the financial needs of their household. So, the top areas were home repairs, utilities, and then, food, mortgage and rent, and medical care.
Okay. So, another area of focus in our economic development section of the survey was job connection and access. So, one of the questions we asked to kind of get an assessment and a snapshot of the current workforce that exists here in Albion was what do people feel that they are currently qualified to do in the workforce? So, some of the top answers was retail work, hospitality, and clerical and administrative work. Another high one was education and manufacturing. So, along with that section of job connection and job access, we also wanted to look forward to see some of the areas where people would like to progress in their profession. So, the question pretty much asked what were people interested in gaining new training to prepare themselves in the workforce? Some of those top answers were in healthcare, hospitality, and also entrepreneurship and business. So, folks, there's a strong focus on people wanting to start their own businesses here in Albion. And along with this question, we also assessed how people would prefer to receive that training. So, the top answer was through hands-on learning or apprenticeship-type training. The next answer was in traditional classroom settings. And lastly, with about twenty percent of the respondents answering was online. So, that's information that can be used with thinking about how we can bring in new courses and new training for people to go ahead and progress in the workforce.
Another question that's always asked is how do I get information to the residents of Albion? And we can see here, this is one of just many of the graphs that are broken down not only by their answers, but also by age. And here, you can see that word-of-mouth is the highest answer amongst all the ages. The next answer that follows that is social media. And that's mostly for the younger eighteen to thirty-four years of age. And then, the next following that is the e-news and the recorder. As you can see, flyers, however, the main source of way that people use to get information through Albion is not actively chosen. It's kind of one of the lowest. But one of the things that we were thinking about is maybe if you combine the idea of word-of-mouth, then instead of passive flier, and so, you're just leaving stuff in businesses, instead, you go to a person out on the street and pass that flyer to them and get them more information about it. So, they're like, okay, I have that in my head now. The next thing, obviously, is transportation. Transportation assistance is also broken down by age. These are the things that people are needing assistance to, and that is doctor's appointments is the highest thing. The next thing following that is grocery shopping and then places within Albion. And as you can see, that is distributed amongst all the groups. All the groups are saying, I need help getting here and there. It's not just one particularly group. But if you see from this graph, actually, eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds are not having a problem going to school. They don't need transportation assistance for that. And then, we broke it down again by income. This is transportation assistance. So, you can see as people's income increases, they're less likely to ask for transportation assistance because they've probably figured out a method to get them to work. Because we saw in the last graph, no one was really saying, I'm having a problem getting to work. The things that people are having a problem getting to are doctor appointments, grocery shopping, and getting to places within Albion. So...
Another aspect that we asked about on our survey was education. Given the recent transition to March Public Schools due to annexation, we focused on out-of-school educational opportunities for respondents. So, you can see for the graph on the left, we asked about preferred youth program locations. The number-one choice was downtown by a lot, followed by the library. So, that region is very popular among our respondents. And then, the types of desired youth programs, we also asked our respondents. The top choices were tutor and mentor programs, which was tied with enrichment activities, so things like music, art, and theater. But a very broad array of what people are interested in in Albion. Another aspect that we asked about was food security among our respondents. So, we asked respondents how frequently they worry about having enough food. So, thankfully, the top response was never. But you can also see that there are plenty of people who said several times a year, several times a month. And then, something else interesting to notice on this graph is that the number-two answer was "no answer", which may speak to the taboo of talking about food security. People may be being uncomfortable talking about food pantry usage and their need for help in regards to food. We also asked respondents why they worry about having enough food. Not surprisingly, the number-one choice was "cost" by far. And some other data we collected was also about food pantry usage in Albion. And we saw that they are being used frequently, places like Albion Interfaith Ministries, New Hope. People are also going to places like Crossroads Church in Marshall and even going as far as Battle Creek in Jackson to access these services.
So, as Danielle mentioned, there will be a full report. We have about a sixty-page report we're developing right now. And that will be available on the city's website. But we did want to present to you, as we said we would, and we have some recommendations. So, the social, the sponsored Facebook post that we did, we got the most response on our survey from that. So, we do recommend utilizing that. It's fairly cost-effective and they actually give you the number of people you reach. So, that's also helpful. We've also been encouraging people to start, or not people, but the city to start neighborhood planning councils. And our respondents said that they would like to be a part of Neighborhood Watch, planning for infill housing developments and other developments. So, as a program, that's something we would be glad to help assist the city council and city government in developing. We also are glad to see that there have been the demolishing and rehabilitating of blighted homes and properties. And we encourage that to continue as that was the number-one environmental concern of the respondents. And then, also, we're glad to see that the Albion Economic Development Corporation has been offering opportunities for people interested in entrepreneurship and starting different types of businesses in Albion as that was the number-one thing people are interested in learning in. And also, just to note what Devin said, people are also interested in learning hands-on, one-on-one alongside people. So, that's another idea to consider. We also realized as we would be talking to so many different community members, this would be a great opportunity to build the volunteerism within our community. And we had over a hundred and fifty different people say they are interested in volunteering. And our team has reached out to all of them with a volunteer interest form that we developed based on the different opportunities that are available in Albion. And we are currently receiving their feedback and trying to plan how that would look going forward. So, we just want to thank everyone who helped us, whether that was participating in the survey, sharing the survey on your Facebook page, hosting us at different sites. We could not have done any of this without the participation and help of you. So, we really appreciate that and we just want you to know that you have helped make it a successful initiative. And if you want more information, please like our Facebook page for maybe people out there listening or anyone who hasn't connected with us that way. Our email is buildalbianvistas@gmail.com. And our program is located in the Luddington Center around the corner on the second floor. And as Morgan mentioned, our group will be leaving for the most part, except Devin, who started a little bit later, on July tenth. So, there will be a new group before you to take off where we are leaving off. But all of this information and a lot more will be available in a report on the city's website. Are there any questions?
Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have like two questions. I seen where it said you were to help alleviate poverty and to, and correct me if I'm wrong, home repairs. So, what if a person needs like their house painted or something like that? Is that something that the AmeriCorps can help with or not?
Well, so, that's interesting. That's a question that we've been receiving quite a bit because our name is Volunteers in Service to America. And we realize that there are a lot of immediate needs within our community, like the home repairs. And that is a part of, you know, alleviating the poverty and, you know, blighted homes within the community. Our job as vistas would be to get something in place to help address that. So, we do have someone working at the land bank right now to help address those needs within the community. And I think personally, all of us would be glad to help work with you as a council member who might see those needs within your precinct and to provide resources. I think that as vistas, our job is indirect service. So, we consider ourselves the people who are connecting people to those resources. And that looks like a number of different things, but unfortunately, we can't be the people
Right, right.
directly meeting those needs.
If you could help like direct someone, like someone elderly that may need their... Those are the people that I'm really concerned about, people that can't get up and do it themselves.
Right.
You know, but if there is somebody where I can go to and I can, you can connect me with and we can sit down and talk about maybe a person that I know that needs their house painted and we can somehow find some volunteers or that person, that homeowner, may have, you know, their children do it if the paint is provided for them, that's awesome too. But as long as I can get a connection, whenever you get it together, just please don't forget that I need that information.
Okay.
Another thing that stood out to me was people talking about food. There was a bill passed, I don't know if it passed, I won't say that, but I know it was signed about people having their food stamps cut. So, I just ask that you look in past the now because it will be coming. And I think it will be a problem, especially if, you know, a parent is off track and the kids are not eating. That's a big concern to me. So, just try to...
I can, I can speak to a few things, but I didn't want to cut you off.
Okay.
So, I know our food security person on our team, Dorothy Felton, she's been working with the Food Hub and Albion Community Gardens. And so, they have three new very sizable garden plots available. The largest being behind Vision of Life on Jefferson Street in between Austin and Broadwell. And that's, I think, three acres. And they're cultivating it as much as they can, but that is something that people can use for free to grow their own food. I think the agreement they have in place is to volunteer twenty hours throughout the season of like May to October. And they get a plot of land and all of the tools and water and training, any sort of educational materials that they would need. And that's something we really need to grow. So, helping spread the word about that would be awesome. And then, we also have two other, I'm saying we, because I've helped with that too. On Albion and Erie, the corner there, there's a place they're developing. And then, Center and Pearl Street. But then, in addition to that, so those are like ways people can grow their own food, which I think is the most sustainable thing and feasible considering that... which I think is the most sustainable thing and feasible, considering that we have people ready to help them. Dorothy's been working with the food pantries to help build their capacity and make sure people know that those resources are available. And then I've also been working with Marshall Middle School to start a weekend food program because there are those food security issues. They have over two hundred and fifty students who qualify for free introduced lunch. And so I'm just looking at how to make that available because that's a large number of students to be feeding. But I want to help see that happen, so that's something that I'm going to be passing on to the next person.
Can we also, can the Vista program also look into the possible backpack kids? Like to, you know, how, I know when my children were little, they had a backpack that they came home with on a Friday. You know, since they weren't in school, they, the school wanted them to make sure that they ate on the weekends. And they will give them a backpack full of food. Couple items were in there, but hopefully something like that maybe.
So that is what, so I'm working with the Marshall Area Community Services to start the program at the middle school. And it's different when you're talking about middle school age students. Unfortunately, there is a stigma with having that. So we're going about it a different way than most elementary school backpack programs have. But I know that Harrington has sought out that program, and they do want a development. They've obviously had a lot of other challenges with starting up this year. But it is part of my role this year before I finish to see that that is going to be in place for next year. I can't guarantee it because, like I said, there's so many other things happening at Harrington. But we are aware that that is a need, and there are people that want to see that met.
And I seen one thing on a Facebook page saying that strawberries were ready. Where are they ready at?
Right behind Big B. I'm hoping at Collaboration Corner. And they are ready, and they come back, like they were three batches last year.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council this evening? Okay. Thank you.
And very quickly too, before we wrap up, there's an event, June twenty-eighth, Community Visioning Celebration. It's hosted by both Vista and the city. We highly encourage you to pass these out. It's going to be fun activities for the kids. Gather more information as well as, the farmer's market is going to be there, which also accepts SNAP and doubles your SNAP money too. So let anyone know that needs to know that.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your services. Item E in the presentations, an update on the precinct four town hall meeting. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I had put together a fourth precinct town hall meeting. And I just expressed to some of the residents that came out, it wasn't a big turnout, but I think that next time that I do it, I think it will be even better. You know, the first time around is always shaky. But it went very well and it was excellent. My job for this council meeting was to listen. So there was a few questions that I had asked, and they gave me their, how they felt about it. And they, and some of them also gave me a solution to what to do about the problem. So it wasn't like, it was just somewhere for them to vent, but also come up with how we can solve the problem. So one of the things that we talked about was the sinkholes, and which I think they are repaired by now. So I told them that any information that I get at the next meeting, that I wanted to also come back with something that they were concerned about and say, hey, you know, we fixed this problem. Hey, we decided to use your idea for something. Because I told them that, you know, council doesn't always have the solution. We need help, you know, and this is their city also. So we welcome their suggestion about these. They also were concerned about youth just walking around and just with nothing to do. And so they expressed, and these are words that are come, that came out of their mouths. Like I said, my job was just to only listen. They were concerned about the youth just having nothing to do. So they really were attached to trying to help Double Vision get open. And they came up with some ideas. Lonnie Brewer, the president of Double Vision, was there. And he took some information down and took into consideration. Another concern of theirs was to enforce the codes of the garbage and things like that that's around town. And one of the suggestions that they had was to, when a citation is issued, maybe have something stapled to that to say, you know, these organizations can help you come clean up or whatever, you know, to, just to give them some outlet, because they may not be able to get out and just do it themselves, you know, offer them some help to get some of these things done and cleaned up. We also talked about the Union Steel Building, and they would like to see it torn down. So I asked them, you know, what could we put there? And they were, they said they would like to see affordable housing there once it's all cleared. And another part of the old Union Steel, they would like to see some affordable housing, one-level houses. So people could be able to stay in their homes once they got up to age. Another thing that I asked was how do we get, what is the best way to get information out to the public? And they told me that the Nextdoor website, just social media period, was one way. But the best way to do it was to knock on doors and do foot patrol. They expressed to me about that. Another thing that they expressed to me about was holding the, holding people accountable for signing tickets for trash or, you know, garbage and things like that. And just, they were concerned about that. So they didn't feel like it was being, no one was being held accountable to get out and go do it. They did suggest that if there was a citation issue, that maybe if the officer is not on call for that couple of minutes or whatever, that they could help pass out, you know, the citations to help the, to help John out, you know, with his busy schedule. So, and they also talked about to adopt a street to help keep different neighborhoods, help clean them up and make them look nice and get a group in each precinct and to go out there maybe once a month or how much, how many ever times to just help clean up. And they were willing to, they gave me that idea. And it was just basically to, they just really want to see the trash code enforced around Albion. Because they were just concerned about that mostly. So I will be doing it again. I'm encouraging all the rest of the, my fellow council members to do the same because a question did come up, is our other precincts doing that? And I just said, I don't know, but I know what I'm doing, you know. I can speak for other people. So I'm just encouraging my fellow council members to do the same. And we also talked about the junior high and what would they like to ask, what would they like to see done with that building? And they mentioned a medical clinic on the first floor, so that people with disabilities were able to get in and out. And I just told them that everything that we talked about, I'll take it to the proper people and hopefully I get a response and can bring something back to them the next time that we do have a discussion. I also talked about what the jobs were as council members in the EDC. I expressed that we do basically the laws and city ordinances, resolutions, proclamations. And we know everybody want to see grocery stores and businesses and things like that get up. We want, they want to see a lot of the industrial park full of businesses. So a lot of people hold the council accountable for that. And I just talked to them about, it is, it's a branch from, of the city, which is the EDC that takes care of that. And I could relate it to the EDC and, you know, just put it in her hands because the city just take care of laws. Well, the council just take care of laws. So I did try to say the difference of what each entity does. But overall, it was excellent. The crowd was really nice, and we had a good, great discussion. It was a success.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? For Councilmember Lawler. Seeing questions, thank you for doing that. We appreciate your initiative to do that. I'm sure the residents appreciate it as well. We're going to move on to public comment. Persons addressing the city council should limit their comments to no more than three minutes and only for agenda items. Are there any public comments regarding this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward to the consent calendar. I see representative from the shell, I don't know if she wanted to have comments or... Did you, did you want to have any comments about the Ben Shell? Okay. Okay, because it's under consent, so I just wanted to make sure if we did, we'd move it. But are there any, because there's no comments about that. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to items for individual discussion. Item A, request approval of the 2016 annual audit.
So moved.
Moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments this evening regarding the audit? I will say, having been on the council for a number of years, I know in previous years, we've had a number of times when, you know, we were admonished to make some improvements. And so it's a positive thing that we're in the clear again this year. So I think that's a positive to the administration and staff and department. So seeing no other comments, we will have a real call vote.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item B, request approval, resolution number 2017-26. A resolution to approve amendment of the city council meeting schedule. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Basically, it was brought to our attention that our regularly scheduled meeting was going to fall on, I guess, the day right between, I guess, the weekend and the Fourth of July. So we wanted to move that. So the, this resolution will move the date from July third to July fifth. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing no questions, real call vote, please.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item C, request approval, resolution 2017-27, to approve additional funding for the County Land Bank Authority demolition program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Do you want to, or whoever wants to.
Tommy, Finance Director. I don't know if yours is color-coded or not in your copies, but. And I don't want to steal Krista's thunder. I think she wants to talk a little bit. But in summary, there were eight parcels that exceeded, on the demolition, there were eight parcels that exceeded the, what the grant would cover. And working with the land bank, a couple of different options were proposed. And it kind of basically comes down to what the city wants to, how much the city wants to contribute. The county, what Krista has done is looked at, she's kind of committed basically to the, to the lower, lowest four, the cost of the lowest four that exceeded, which is like sixty-four hundred dollars. If the city wants to contribute, she's willing to go a little bit more matches. So I guess again, it's kind of how, how many of the parcels, how much the city wants to go over. I think in the resolution Cheryl talked about ten thousand, which if we took the sixth lowest, that comes up to like ninety-eight, ninety-eight forty-one. And, I'm sorry, it comes up to nineteen thousand six eighty-two. But again, the land bank would be able, would be willing to split it with us. So it's ninety-eight forty-one for each, the city and the land bank. That's where Cheryl come up with the ten thousand. But with that, I'll see if Krista wants to add anything for each.
So basically, the grant that we have has a cap on project cost at twenty-five thousand dollars, and we can't exceed it. We can do a local match to make up the rest of the amount, but we can't seek another grant. So we can't seek other federal or state funding to cover the additional costs. And what we have here are just several projects that have a lot of asbestos in them. And most of it's plaster or vermiculite, and it's very expensive to remove it. And so I, you know, we can get twenty-five thousand dollars for each demo from the state. So to me, spending sixty-two hundred dollars on four demolitions is the cheapest it's ever going to cost for me to do those demolitions. So I'm going to go ahead and do that because we need to get those houses down. And as Tom said, there are two additional ones, the houses at one oh nine Norwood and three twenty-four Broadwell, which just are together about fifteen thousand over. And if we split sort of all of the costs, we would both be paying about ninety-eight hundred dollars. And that would give us these additional demolitions. We unfortunately have two projects that are quite a bit over twenty-five thousand. And those would be the projects at five oh two Burr Oak, which is very near the college campus. And then three twenty-five West Broadwell, which is very near the Albion Public Housing site and the community garden. So they are of concern for me. It's not something that I, at the land bank, can say I can pay half of that. The Broadwell site is thirty-two, almost thirty-three thousand dollars over the twenty-five thousand. So I, you know, I don't know how we're going to get that down.
What would cause the overage?
It's asbestos. They're chock-full of asbestos. Yeah. You know, if we were writing the grant rules, we would say, local community, get the most expensive ones down. And then if you run out of money, come back and get the lower-cost ones because it's more affordable for you. But this twenty-five thousand dollar cap is new, it's a new rule. It's a rule on this grant. It's a rule on the grant that's just now coming out or just came out from MISTHA. It's kind of the new thing. So they aren't going to make a special, you know, exception for us. So we have to figure out, is there another way that we can pay for it? And so one of the ways we can pay for it is to split it. I can't do all of them. I have projects that are over in other communities, and I need to be able to send some resources to those communities as well. But, you know, I'm willing to do the ninety-eight hundred in Albion. I think it's a good investment of money for the number of projects that we'll be able to get down. And I'm hoping you'll meet me halfway on that.
So basically, just the ten thousand?
Yeah, it's just a little less, but ten thousand's an easier number. We wouldn't be asking for the additional two hundred bucks, you know.
The other question I have is what, where is the money coming from? Because I wasn't in the memo.
Initially, excuse me, initially, when we were talking about the ten, when I was about with the city manager, we were considering solid waste, which is traditionally where we would go for projects of this nature when you're demolining houses and stuff. So that's, and there is money available in solid waste. I mean, as far as this ten, that's not an issue there. I, I mean, as far as this 10, that's not an issue there.
The other question, I think, is there a, um, with, with solid waste, is there a debt obligation? And does he pay back in solid waste or something else?
I'm sorry, to pay what?
Is there, is there a debt obligation in solid waste? Is there something else we have to pay back through solid waste?
Um, not to pay back that I can think of. The only, the, the bigger items we have in there are the, uh, agreement to pay the county for the recycling center. And then, of course, in, um, July, I think it is the cleanup, um, where it's gonna run, which I think we're going to get to here a little bit later. But that'll probably run, I don't know, 10, 11,000, maybe something like that for the cleanup. Or maybe a little more than that, actually.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So which properties will be demolished, um, under this resolution?
It would be the properties at 109 Norwood and 324 West Broadwell. So if you look at the map I handed out, I highlighted the four that are over. And then two of them have the asterisks by them, and those are the two that are under consideration. I couldn't get the asterisk to highlight, so I apologize for that. But, you know, and then the rest of the projects on here are the, what's coming down in Albion under this first round. There were some tax foreclosures that came through this year that are also in poor condition that we're hoping to bring in on the second round.
So, uh, question regarding, I guess, going forward, um, is this kind of a one-time grant? Is it coming back? Because I, because I know the land bank's worked with the city for the past couple of years to really do that. Is that something you see continuing to happen?
Well, this particular grant is going to allow us to take down our inventory, except for ones that are over cost or ones that we're trying to rehab. Um, so I feel really positive about that. That doesn't mean that next year, we're not going to get more tax foreclosures that need demolished. I think that that's something that is going to continue. I hope that it's fewer, though. Um, we did our first demolition grant in 2015 in Albion, and that was 32. Last year, I think it was 23. This year, it's 26, hoping to get maybe, you know, 11 to 15 more, depending on what we get from the county treasurer, um, just to try and really address that blight while we have the money to address it. So we have done a lot of partnerships where we kind of say, okay, we have this and we need to meet in the middle and split. We've done that a few times now.
Uh, Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So in the resolution, okay, tell me if I'm confused. What I see in the resolution is that there, there will be a total of six demolitions, correct?
The way, if we went ahead with the 10,000, yes. Um, like I said, the land bank has been generous enough to guarantee four. Uh, if we want to go ahead with contributing 10, they, we could pick up two of the next highest on the list to give us a total of six. And then that would leave two that were out of range, you know, above that, so.
So the four that are, that have, the land bank is committing to, which, which four are those?
So they're not highlighted because I've already told the contractors we pay for them and given a notice to commence. They are 718 North Albion. That's, uh, $2,168 over budget. 503 Austin, that's almost 2,000, I'm sorry, 1,200 over budget. 926 Eaton is almost $1,000 over budget. And 403 North Mingo is almost 2,000 over budget. So Albion, Austin, Eaton, those are all in corridors. Those are all high priorities. City has identified those as priority, you know, to do corridor cleanup. Um, and then Mingo is kind of the worst house in the block. You know, we want to get it down. I'm sorry? No, those have a less amount of asbestos and the overrun on the project cost is smaller. So if you look, um, on the spreadsheet I gave you, over budget tells you how much over budget it is. And so the ones in yellow, I just said, you know, that's the cheapest we're ever going to get those down. So let's go ahead and make that commitment. And, and I felt comfortable doing that with our funds. So that, that overall, those four projects in yellow, the overall cost to, that, to me, is $6,217, basically. If you agree and, and you pass this resolution, we would be picking up the Norwood and the 324 Broadwell. And so Norwood is over by 6,400 and Broadwell is over by 7,000.
Councilmember Spicer.
You did say that the money is there available for this. I didn't hear you say that correctly.
Correct, yep.
Okay, are there any further questions? So basically, a one, for this, at least this time, a one-time payment out of solid waste.
Correct.
And the, I, I don't have, I open if the auditor's numbers, but this is the end of 2016, correct? That he had?
Uh, the audit numbers are, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, this is basically 100 and, 118,000 dollars there.
Yeah, and, and in the 17 budget, uh, we always budget, um, some for, uh, demolition in case there are storms or fires or, uh, you know, fires on uninsured properties and some of that. So we always put some in there, uh, for demolitions anyway. And then, of course, in the last few years, it's worked out convenient because of being able to partnership with the land bank on these grants.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So if this resolution passes, what's the timeline of having these properties demolished?
It would be this year. Um, we have, so on the ones in yellow that we've already committed to, we're doing the asbestos abatement. And those are just going like there's no stop in them. Um, we have not given the go-ahead to do the abatement on Norwood or Broadwell because we didn't know if we had the funding and that would be an additional cost to us. So once we get that, we would pick them back up and they would be down this year. I was talking with my project manager today, and I know she's kind of trying to coordinate the demos in Albion with the contractors. So it's not, they're not kind of going back and forth between here and other communities in the county. This grant's countywide, so we have a lot of demos going down. And so we're just trying to get the scheduling, but it would be this year. The demos in Albion, the rest of the demos are on round two. And they'll be, they're supposed to be down, I think, by the end of July. So there'll be some demo activity starting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Lawler.
Okay, you have highlighted, um, 325 Broadwell.
Yep.
But on the other paper, it says unable to cover costs, so.
Right, so that, the ones on this sheet that are highlighted are the ones that are over cost that I can't commit to covering. Right. So the two that have asterisks are the ones that we're talking about. And then, you know, I was thinking today, is there some creative way we could ask a bank or somebody else to get funding for those? I think they're both important projects. They're just very high, very high cost. So we would need another partner to come to the table, I think, unless.
So for the, the Broadwell and the, and the Norwood?
The, though, that would be the 502 Burr Oak and the 325 Broadwell. We have two in Broadwell.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a, seeing no other questions, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, thank you. Um, we will move on to, item D under, items for individual discussion. Request approval, resolution number 2017 dash 28. Resolution to approve, uh, cops hiring program grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, it's, I thought I saw.
Yep, Deputy Chief Kern, if you could.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are luckily, lucky enough to come across a grant to hire two community policing officers. And what this is, it's a grant through the Department of Justice that goes for, uh, 75% of the salary to hire two officers. Uh, the city would have to pay the 25% uh, the remaining balance. What we're looking to do, this would go for three years total. It's 75% for each year. It would cost the city about $35,000 each year or 17,500 per officer. And what our goal is with this is Chief Kip and I want to take and hire two officers to put on the road and then take two officers within the department we currently have and make them community policing officers. So their sole purpose would be to do nothing but what you saw at Juneteenth, what you've been seeing on social media with the kids, the at-risk youth, uh, working, coming up with some sort of a mentoring program. And so when I got hired in here about 19 years ago, the former chief, LJ McCowen, had three cops officers through the same type of grant. And when you have the right people in there, it is phenomenal and it can work. And I've seen it work. And now we have the ability to have that same thing again. Um, and so this kind of goes along, one of the things that we're trying to do to show that Albion's different than everybody else. And our department's different than everybody. And so in order to do that, we would like to bring on two more officers to do just that job. One of the things too, that's nice about it, is we've been working with some council members, uh, Councilwoman Brown and, uh, Councilman Barnes, along with Reverend Alexander and Pastor Amos. We have, uh, one of the things that we have coming up that's going to be passed out. I'm gonna, you guys, this is hot off the press, so you get to see the flyer firsthand. It's a driving while black, policing while white.
Okay, okay.
And what we're going to do is we are going to have a very candid and open discussion at Bethel Baptist. Reverend Alexander and Pastor Amos officiating it. We're going to print up about 200 to 300 of these flyers and have them passed out at Sunday service. And, uh, I'm gonna hit the barber shops and we're gonna hit social media. And we want everybody to come who wants to sit down and talk. And we want to have an open discussion about what it's like on both sides of the fence. So we can see other people's perspective that we don't see, and they can see our perspective that they don't see. And this is just one of the many, uh, programs that we plan on doing. Uh, we, we're at Juneteenth. I think that's the most police presence we've ever had there. We changed our uniforms. We used some of the equipment we got from the military. Councilwoman Reed kicked me out of that kitchen and took charge. Uh, for public safety purposes, I was able to take some of her, uh, sweet potato pies off the hands of everyone.
That's where it went.
That is where it went. So, uh, and we're gonna do more at, uh, the festival this year. And so this is kind of a prelude of what we plan to do for 2018 and the next couple of years.
Uh, are there any questions or comments? Councilmembers Brown, uh, Lawler and Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. So, okay, this grant is for two additional positions, correct? Does the grant specify that the, that the, so what, okay, what I'm hearing you say is that two additional police positions will be available with the approval of this grant? And then two officers that are currently acting as officers will be moved to, is it full-time community?
They would be full-time.
Okay, so, I think I answered my own question, but I, okay, I.
It was a great question.
Well, what I'm trying to figure out is that, um, in approving this grant, it doesn't like tie our hands to, to, like, say, we have two full-time community policing positions. And then we, um, later down the road feel that the police officer or one, one or, one or both could be better, uh, more efficiently used in other ways? That doesn't hinder, um, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. But what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to ask is that, is there anything in, from what I'm hearing, this grant is just for two positions?
It's two positions with the idea of creating a community policing program.
Right, okay. But that, whatever that looks like, it's not it's just stolen. It has to be two full-time community policing positions, is what I'm.
It's not specifically hiring two community, it's to hire two more bodies.
Two new, right, got you.
And then to take our, our officers who already know the community.
Right, two.
Not brand-new people who've never met any of us and say, here you go. Go, uh, go make friends with everybody. We're gonna take what we have, who everybody knows and likes, and put them in those positions. And then bring new ones on board to backfill their spots on the road.
Got you. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Lawler and then Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I see that, um, the public safety, um, is a big chunk in our, our, our funding. But, um, I, I just, you said that, so how much will be spent for?
It would cost the city.
How much are you asking?
We're gonna ask for a total of, uh, I think it's 315,000 from the Department of Justice. We're asking the city council to give us $35,000 each year. That's what it costs for two police officers. That would be the city's match, or 17,500 per officer. The Department of Justice will pay us 315,000 over a three-year period to pick up the rest of the tab for those officers' salaries.
And so you're asking us to, the city to fund 35,000 each year?
Each year, correct.
And what, did you say the 17 was?
It's, that breaks down to 17,500 per officer.
Oh, okay, got you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Reed.
Two things. With the two new officers, are they going to be able to, or is it in your plan that they will be able to work with the schools too, on children who have problems there to keep them from getting dismissed from school and be able to stay in school and work with the parent and the child?
Let me read you my narrative that I submitted.
Okay, you want to hear my second one? Okay. And then you can read me your whole narrative. Okay, so, and, and, and then I, have, have you did any connecting with the juvenile courts of Calhoun County to see about keeping kids, kids who have really created a, a severe, uh, problem uh, from going to juvenile or going to court or something like that? But, but rather, your people would work with the child and the family to change the behavior that needed to change?
Yes.
Now I'm listening.
For the description, for the project, to hire officers and create a community policing team that solely interacts with at-risk youth, minority communities, create positive public relations between law enforcement and the citizens, work on crime prevention, neighborhood watch, diversion programs, and working with various organizations to develop mentoring programs with churches, schools and the college. Is a brief overview. But to answer your question, absolutely. That would be one of the biggest things, is a diversion program, a mentoring program of some sort. And to work, the only way to do that is to work with the churches, some of the schools and, and work together.
Yeah, because I was very impressed with the youth academy. And I know every child can go there. But I know if, if they had someone who worked with them, um, with that positive, uh, attitude of you're gonna change or else, you know, that, that would be very, very.
Absolutely.
Uh, Councilmember Spicer and then Brown.
Thank you. Um, this grant is for a three-year period. Note, note. And, um, at the end of the three-year period, when the 75% um, that is contributed by the DOJ goes away, then that money would come out of the budget.
It would have to come out of, yes, we would have to figure out how to fund that, whether that was, uh, through our department or whether it was through, uh, money coming out of fund balance, wherever. We would be stuck at the end of that grant with that percentage if we did not find another grant.
If we.
Okay, I'm.
Am I done?
Oh, no, you're good, you're good.
At the, okay, so then, um, I guess my concern is, is there money? Because I'm, I'm, I'm thinking down the road. Is there money, um, in the budget at the end of three years to accommodate officers' pay and fringe benefits? And, um, i- if not, I mean, I, I think we're not hiring people and not going to tell them that it's a grant and ends and you may not position, I mean, how is that? Anybody given any thought to that?
Well, one of the things is, we kind of looked ahead, Chief Kip and I looked ahead and we thought, that's gonna be a question that's gonna come up. What are we gonna be able to do? And so we look at some of the things. And last year, Chief Kip came in under budget in several areas. And he actually gave back a, a good portion of money at the end of 2016. and he actually gave back a good portion of money, uh, at the end of two thousand sixteen. And so, right now, we would, we would look to either somehow, there are some other funding mechanisms we can look at. I think we can possibly put some more into our budget to look at. However, we have cut a lot of the fat out of our budget throughout the years. Uh, when I hired in here, there was thirty-six officers and now we're down to, uh, eighteen. So, we've cut substantially, uh, in public safety. Um, but we are, like you brought up, we are a big chunk of the, of the pie. So, one of the things, we, we, we are looking at some sort of thing that we can look forward towards the future. Uh, it doesn't mean we can relax for the next three years because at the end of three years, we have to figure out what to do. We've done this grant before and we've been able to maintain the officers after the grant had expired. Um, and I think, in looking forward and looking at what's going on in the city and, and the revenue projections, we were not where we're at ten years ago.
Uh, yeah, never go back.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, I don't know the, um, I know the grant deadline is coming up, but timeline-wise, when will these funds, if this is approved, be dispersed and how will this impact the budget for this year?
Nothing for this year.
Okay.
This is all starting January first of next year.
Okay, so there is time to...
There's time to plan.
...address this in next year's budget. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spicer.
Okay, I, I just wanted to say, um, that it all sounds well and good. I just don't want, you know, we're not like us to be hiring officers, they not, you know, they're gonna, I'm sure, certainly, sure that they're gonna be hired with the understanding that this is a grant and it ends at this period and you may or may not... 'Cause I don't want someone with a family and children, you know, to take on a position that may not, you know, be around after three years. That's my concern.
But I think the three years gives us a chance to see how well it's going to help our city and if it does that, then we would make arrangements to continue. Because I think it's needed, it's really needed. And so, uh, and, and, and if you can do a lot in three years and if, and if it does happen, then I'm sure, you know...
I, Chief Kip and I share that concern, it, it is a concern and I think, I, I'm confident we can do it.
So, I, I wanna just make sure that we're clear, so basically, kind of what Council, uh, Councilmember Brown was saying earlier, what you're, what you're saying is, you're gonna get the grants for two officers. You're gonna basically go and, and make those just regular, the people who are hired under that are going to be just regular officers. And you're gonna swi- you're gonna switch with...
Yes.
Okay, so officers who are currently, um, more familiar with the community, they're gonna be then put on this, this beat of...
Correct.
...community policing. The, the question I had, so, um... You just made mention of, you know, giving the narrative, basically to ask for the, the money, um, for what we would do. Now, does the grant stipulate that, you know, it has to be in, um, let's say like a community policing or, or that? Is it, or is it just...
It's a community policing theme as well. So it's for the sole purpose of adding more officers to kinda bridge the gap of what has been taken away from some time ago. Uh, the community policing program was a very successful program. When it's implemented correctly, it's phenomenal, when it's not, it's a disaster. And, um, lo and behold, the federal government kinda looked back and said, "You know, we actually did something right, we need to kinda go back to that," so...
So, so, in this kind of, the same vein of, uh, Councilmember Reed was saying, so, you know, I know there was a, when I was going to go as a resource officer, um, is this that or is this...
No, it's not so much a school resource officer because we had that before when we had, the, the school was here. I've talked with, uh, various council members and to the community. I think if these community policing officers were to go into the schools, it would be more of like a, a mentoring program for like, uh, Councilwoman Reed has brought up reading. We would do more things geared towards that. I don't think there's really, at, at first I kinda felt personally that we should jump in with both feet to do a school resource officer, but I don't think that's the answer. Uh, I, I think that we need to be there to show a different light than a cop patrolling an elementary school. I think we need to be there to show them, they can come to us and we're there to be trusted and we're not what you see around us and, and the rest of the nation. And so, we would be in the school a little bit, but we would be more of a mentoring role than a patrolling mode.
Yeah, and I do, I do study a patrol, but I'm, I'm thinking of like if there was a child who was a problem, we've talked about that, okay? If, if the school reported to you about this child, you would be able to make arrangements with the parent, if that, not in the school, but outside of the...
Right.
To, to help the child change.
Because a lot of times, a- as we all know, there's underlying issues that, that lead to these problems with these children. A lot of these kids are acting out because something else is going on. And, uh, it, it kinda goes into the diversion program of it and it goes into the mentoring program, they kinda blend together.
So, the, I guess the, the question, um, that I have is by, um, you know, by, by telling the federal government, we're gonna do this, these types of things, when they actually get here on the ground, that doesn't tie our hands to say, "Okay, this might be something else, um, that we'd want the officers to do as well."
They can still respond to any other type of scene that we made them, need them to. Their primary goal and function is to be a community policing officer. Uh, to, to take that, whoever it may be, whether it's the new guys or the oldest guy we've got, and, and make that person a community policing officer. They'll still be able to do everything that any officer can do. But when they come, put that uniform on, they punch that clock. That clock might be during school hours, that clock may be after school hours. It may be any time and they may be doing just the community stuff.
And I think, and I think that's, basically, that's the next question, as I asked, is about time. Because like, I, I know, you know, if you're, let's say you're, um, an officer who's on a regular patrol, there's certain things you do.
Right.
Um, and so, all that time is basically accounted for, but in this, you know, I'm sure because they're like not in a school every day, there's probably gonna be time where it's, you know, I have to find something to do. I just wanna make sure that if, if, um, the council, um, you know, if we said, "Hey, we wanna work with, you know, people who..." Okay, for example, like Councilmember Lawler mentioned earlier, someone gets cited for something, okay? And there might be some options to help them to deal with that. Does, does that, does that fall under, does the police visiting, does that fall under community policing in your definition?
It's a pretty broad spectrum and so, what's nice is that some things like that could fall under that. We, I, I don't know if, what you, what the council's apprised of as far as our monthly staff, we take over four hundred calls, roughly, four to four hundred and fifty calls a month per service with AT people, that's, that's quite a bit. And then, what we'd be able to do is take two of our best community relations officers and do, address that sort of problem. Address the, the, the school issues, address some other things. And so, they haven't really said they will do X, Y and Z. They've said, "Look, we'll give you money to hire some people so you can have some, do a community policing oriented program."
'Cause, 'cause one of the things, and I, and I made mention of this in the goal-setting session, so it's, you know, I put it out there as a suggestion to the public is that I think it, um, and I think, um, Chief Kip mentioned this too, at one point, the officers were, um, trained in code, uh, code enforcement.
Yes, we currently do with the abandoned vehicles.
Okay, so, but, and so what I'm thinking about, and this kind of ties in to, I'm trying to get some, uh, consensus here too, but like, kind of what, uh, Councilmember Spicer was saying, if, if three years when, um, it comes back and we have to pay the full, you know, price for the positions, we have to fully fund those, it'd be helpful if we could say, "Well, not only are we getting, you know, just, you know, officer, like, you know, the police officer and the firefighter, but we also get this other set of skills." And so, I think that's something that, if we can have that discussion, I think, like I'm saying, as the council and the administration...
I think it should.
Um, that'd be helpful to do because it would, it would, it would make, um, at least me, it'd make me feel more comfortable, you know, paying for that.
Sure.
If, if we had additional kind of cross-training and, and expertise. So, Councilmembers Lawler and Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, is there any way, um, without, um, micromanaging, that we could, um, just like from time to time, receive an update of what the community policing program is doing and, um, the success stories that I know is gonna come out of this?
I absolutely think you should.
Okay.
We, we have to give quarterly reports, uh, to the federal government, but I think as a whole, and, and to go off what, uh, Mayor Brown was saying, you should know what you're getting, what you're paying for. And so, I think absolutely that should be shared and I think it should be shared also on social media.
Yeah.
To the rest of the city because ultimately, they're the ones paying for it through their tax dollars too, so...
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a final comment, uh, when I ran for council, this was one of my platforms, improving community and police relationships. And, um, it's very important to me and it's much needed. So, I mean, I fully support the community policing vision, um...
I can probably answer a few questions on this one, um, but in general, this is for the electronics recycling program. It's in conjunction or in partnership with the solid waste and recycling program of the Calhoun County Community Development Department. This year, the event will be held on Saturday, July twenty-second. And essentially, with this, um, request, um, there will be special items that are, um, available for recycling. Items such as computers, televisions and other such things which would generally, um, come at a cost to residents. If the city were to allocate up to two thousand dollars to support this program, then residents would not be required to pay ten dollars per television. So essentially, that's the ask.
Wait, so, um... So, just, I have one kind of little question there. So, the, is the ordinance, so, we're not modifying the contract with, uh, with the hauler?
I'm sorry?
With the, wait, with Granger to pick up the...
Um, that's the next, that's the next one.
That's something different.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So this is the one right before that?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, this is the, the resolution item E, just before the one that you're referencing. And, um, essentially, there's an Albion cleanup day that happens on July twenty-second, that, that's the date for this year. And this is just, uh, the ask is for two thousand in addition, so that residents who have items that would come at a cost to recycle, such as TVs, computers and other such things, um, it would alleviate or at least avoid residents from having to pay to recycle those items.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So, am I correct in, in, um, my understanding that the recycling program day is July twenty-second, but the electronic collection day is July twenty-third?
Thank you for asking that question. I believe that that date that you're seeing in the packet isn't correct, but it's correct on the, uh, resolution summaries. So, thanks for, um, pointing that out. And maybe we can double-check that, I believe this Saturday, for this twenty-seventeen year, July twenty-second is a Saturday, not the twenty-third.
The twenty-second is a...
So, so it looks like the flyer for the event...
Is wrong.
...has a typo.
Okay, and then one more question, Mayor?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, the resolution says, is asking council to approve up to two thousand from the solid waste fund. So there's a possibility that the to- it's possible that it may not take two thousand?
That's correct.
And, but we won't know that until the twenty-second, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, the question I have though is, with the current single hauler, uh, agreement, can you, I think you can put a TV out.
That's fine. This is recycled, it's a recycle...
Well, I know that, I'm just saying, I'm just saying for that, under that, you can put that out.
Uh, I think there's certain, certain bulk items and I don't know that computers are covered.
Okay. So, so they can, and I know you can call them and they will...
Charge you.
Yeah, but is it more than two?
I'm sorry, Mayor, um, I, I believe there's an additional charge for those, those bulk...
Do you know how much it is?
I don't know exactly how much, but I, I... You call ahead, but there is a charge.
It does depend on the item.
Okay. And so this, and this two thousand dollars would go to the, basically go to the county recycling center?
It allows for safe recycling, exactly, and what it would do is, um, it would, basically, it's to pay the vendors to properly transport and dispose these items. Um, there's concerns with old, um, electronics, some are just, um, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Or Councilmember French.
Yeah, so old electronics have things like lead solder and cadmium and, and mercury and things like that that are, that are quite toxic to the environment. So they have to be disposed of in a very careful way, uh, which is why, uh, vendors charge the owners who are giving it up a fee to help cover their costs.
And then when, I guess, I guess the other question is when we do the, um... So, yeah, so we do this, so in the past, we've, we've been, people could drop those off. So...
In the past, there was a mini-grant that was able to assist in this. It was of, we were able to successfully obtain a five-hundred-dollar mini-grant from the Calhoun County Community Development Waste Program to support it. So, that's not the case for this year, so...
So then, I guess what's the, if, if five hundred dollars got covered in the past, what's the, what's accounting for the...
Oh, I know the answer to that.
So, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. The way I'm understanding this resolution is that we did obtain the five-hundred-dollar mini-grant from the Calhoun County Community Development Waste Program, but we need additional funding.
She's right, actually, yeah, I'm getting it, thank you for that clarification.
So can I ask a question, please? Okay, so, say the, the day of the event comes and there are like tons of people and it, it exceeds the two thousand dollars.
My understanding is that Calhoun County, you know, if, we're in partnership, they'll cover if it goes past that. Their ask is up to two thousand.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, Councilmember French.
So, to answer the, the first question as to why the difference between five hundred and two thousand is, is that we got that, is that, um... Five hundred is represented ten dollars, fifty people coming, disposing of things that need, that cost ten dollars. By asking for up to two thousand dollars, that now adds two hundred more potential members of our community being able to drop off old electronics. Um, so my guess is, is that the number's gonna fall somewhere between those two numbers. But you're right, Councilman Brown, it, it could be that everybody's got a picture tube TV in their basement, um, and, uh, and a nineteen-seventy, nineteen-eighty-five computer. And so, I think that, um, you know, I think we're gonna see moving forward, um, more and more people with disposed, need for disposal of electronics. So, I think that supporting this just basically tells our citizens that, that we as a city value, um, people properly disposing of their things instead of dumping them on the side of the road or trying to put it in with the regular trash. And so, I, I would support this measure.
I have one, so, I have one question, so when the ci- the city usually has like a bulk day too usually, that's separate from this?
This is, this would be, um, thanks for asking, because of the convenience of that bulk day, which is the Albion cleanup day, this would be on the same day?
Okay.
This would be held on that day?
So then, I guess my question is, in the past, if I had a TV on that day, what, what was the practice? 'Cause I know people put stuff like that out.
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat the question?
So in, in the past, if, on, you know, the citywide cleanup day where it's, you know, let's say, let's say it's Harris Field and I have an old TV. What would we do with that? Um, and years and years ago, I'm not really sure, I know since I've been involved in it, there's always been a electronic, additional electronics pickup...
pickup. Unfortunately, it does cost us funds to do that. There's a recycling charge that goes with it, dismantling and proper. Getting rid of, I guess, those pieces inside of those electronics. So, it does cost money to do that. In years gone by, I'm not really certain what they've done, so.
Twenty years ago, we put them in a dumpster. Fifteen years ago, they were in a dumpster. Put in a landfill. Yeah. Is it really free? So, EPA regulations have changed in how we dispose electronics, and so this is, looking at ten, fifteen years ago, things are different.
Are there any other questions or comments, concerns with council?
Councilmember Lawler.
Okay. Roll call vote, please, thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item F, request approval of second reading and adoption of ordinance twenty-seventeen dash zero four and ordinance to amend ordinances, ordinance number sixty-six dash one forty in the solid waste portion of the code. Is there a?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any update?
Just, just for the sake of brevity, I'd like to remind the council, this was just to, since the single hauler includes yard waste pickup, we've modified the ordinance to allow for that. We've also modified the ordinance to allow pickup of bulky waste with certain restrictions, for example, not being able to place it out more than forty-eight hours prior to the rear range collection time to avoid having people put large bulky items and have them sit out all week and things of that nature, but just makes those two changes. Any question?
Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item G, request approval of second reading and adoption of, I guess I'd just say various ordinances, to approve various ordinances and to amend and then to rescind various ordinances, is there a motion? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any update?
So, what this does, just to remind the council again, in the interest of brevity, the, with the growing interest in, in companies like Uber and Lyft, the state has taken local control over vehicles for hire away and it's not regulated at the state level. So, what we've done is we've rescinded the, largely the bulk of our vehicles for hire ordinances. The regulations that we've put in place are the limited regulations that the state allows us to do from this point forward. Those include discrimination, regulation of certain signage, insurance that the drivers are required to carry, and penalties, things of that nature.
Yes, okay, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. H, discussion changes, recommendations for council rules of procedure, I'm going to, or.
You can, I can.
Oh, we're not, well, we're not.
I, I.
Approved, I guess.
I move that we table this until we have such a draft that we can review.
Oh, oh, okay, I was just going to, before you, can I?
I support that.
I was going to read the one. Okay. Well, not table, it's not table, it's postponed.
Postponed until the, yeah.
Okay, we're moving second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. That was easy. City manager report.
I just have.
I.
Number I.
I.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, you are.
You're covering the gun too?
Yeah. Item I, discussion update on pothole repairs on, on Ionia and North Street and Division and Hall Streets.
Good evening again. The two locations that have been identified have both been fixed a week, week and a half ago. I would like to say that, like public safety, the Public Services Division Department has also had its numbers reduced significantly through the years. We're doing the best we can. A couple, the loss of bodies, for lack of better terms, along with sick time usage and vacations and those types of things, it seems at times as we're slow to respond. We do take a look at things. If we get a complaint, we'll get out, especially in the case of these two sinkholes, we'll get barricades and those types of things on them so there's no safety issue, and we'll get back to them as soon as we can. We've also been busy this spring and early summer with Memorial Day Parade and those festivities, getting Riverside Cemetery up to snuff, so to speak. We've been busy with the marketplace, not only with the normal market that we have on Wednesdays and Saturdays, but we also had the French market recently, and we spent a fair amount of time there getting that screwed up and looking good, so. And then, we also spent a tremendous amount of time at Hall and Park, so, which I would like to thank Len Reed for working with us and giving us direction on how you seen things and wanted those to come to fruition. It's been a good experience for us, but we have been extremely busy. I know, as I say, that we seem slow to respond sometimes, but believe me, if it's something that's urgent, we'll take care of it. If not, we're putting it on the list and we'll get to it as soon as we can.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I want to first of all, thank you for taking care of this and thank you for the work you do in the city of Albion. I have a question regarding the repair on Ionia and North Street and Division and Hall. The fix, is it a short-term fix, like you filled it in and kind of just smoothed it out, or what are the long-term, are there any long-term plans?
The fix on Hall and Division, as I remember, was a manhole that basically is through the years has crumbled and collapsed. That's all been built back up like it should be.
Okay.
That should be a fairly long-term fix. Ionia Street, as I understand, there was some piping that collapsed there, and what I was told from the crews that were up and actually did the work, that more likely than that, we're going to be back because the pipe on both sides of it is bad as well. So, obviously, we can only replace so much.
Right, okay.
Until we have extreme need to, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to you and your crew for coming out and addressing the issues and concerns that my precinct had for the, the sinkholes. It was just basically concern, more of the concern about children maybe going around it. So, I seen a little aggressive, apologized, but it was just, that was just the main concern that we were all concerned about.
Thank you, Councilmember French.
Thank you again. I'll echo the, the voices of other council members. Thank you for all the things that your crew does do. I found that in communicating concerns from my precinct through our city manager, that while it does take some time, the issues when they are addressed are addressed extremely well and professionally, so thank you. Now, the Gaswicks say thank you for addressing that tree concern in the Riverside Cemetery, so we appreciate that. Pass it on to Harry and those guys.
Thank you. And, and I, and I, I should say that, well, I'll say that later, okay. We will move on to city manager report.
Sure, I'll make this brief. As you know, our city manager is part of the Albion delegation visiting our sister city in France, that would be Noisy Lavoie, so hopefully she's enjoying herself there in the Paris area. What's that?
Hopefully, we're not in communication with her, so.
Yes. Well, I just wanted to report on a couple of items. The French market on June tenth was a tremendous success. We saw over forty vendors participating and we had over two hundred patrons. And I just, as one of the coordinators, I'd like to thank the city, well, the county commissioner, the mayor, and council members for attending. It was really special and I thank you so much for, for being there. I'd also like to thank the Department of Public Services for sprucing up that Stofford Plaza, it looked fantastic, so thank you so much. And I'd like to thank all the residents of Albion who came out to support and it was wonderful. The Juneteenth celebration, again, that was this past Saturday, it was a beautiful event, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Reed, the Department of Public Services, and ADPS for their hard work. It was a wonderful event. And then, just one more, Danielle mentioned earlier, the Albion Community Visioning Celebration. It's an interactive event of family-friendly fun, food, entertainment, and idea sharing that will take place on Wednesday, June twenty-eighth. It's from four PM to seven PM over at the fire station, and the Albion Farmers Market will actually be setting up along Clinton Street. So, they won't be at their regularly scheduled location, they'll actually be part of this event, and there'll be all sorts of events happening there, entertainment, kids activities, information sharing, food trucks, and so it should be a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any future agenda items, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. The discussion changes, recommendations for the council rules of procedure on the next agenda, please.
And then, Councilmember Spicer, Attorney Hartness, Councilmember French, who did that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Checked on already. I would like to have placed on the agenda, discussion report with regard to the Victory Park restaurants. The smell, the, some has to be going on, or maybe even good cleaning or whatever, but I'd like to have a report of that.
Attorney Hartness.
I just have an update on the nuisance litigation. It's all part of this council next time.
Okay, Councilmember French.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I said an update, a litigation update on the nuisance lawsuits, and we have pending against some of the dilapidated markets.
Thank you.
I did not realize until Friday that our vistas were, were not going to be, not all the vistas would still be in service in Albion on the fifth of July. They are wrapping up their work and, and will be taking some well-deserved time off as they finish out. I intended to present a proclamation to them as well as the certificates. I thank Mayor and Jill and Stacy for getting those out quickly today, but I would like a proclamation to be read in support of these nine folks who have spent a year in Albion helping create some structures that will help the Vista program and the city move forward in years to come.
Thank you. The future, and I guess we can discuss again about the, he's not here tonight, but the voting location.
I'm sorry.
The, yeah, we need to kind of have a follow-up on that.
The what?
The Kroll School situation.
Oh, the Kroll School issue, yes.
So, I need to put that on there. But seeing no other future agenda items, we'll move forward. We have one missing member who has told us he wouldn't be here, so to have a motion to excuse.
So moved.
Support.
Move support, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Public comment, persons addressing the city councils, or limit their comments to no more than three minutes. Proper decorum is required, and please give your name and address, any public comment this evening. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
As a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Support.
Moving, okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.